Thank you, Birdie. Will you please join me in a pledge allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first order of business this evening is reports of city officers, the first being comments by mayor. And I am thankful and privileged this evening to be able to honor two retiring employees. The first is Wendy McKeeranen, for 32 years of service with the recreational department. Wendy has been certainly an integral part of our whole recreation department from day one. She has done a little bit of everything over the last 32 years, and it really built us into a very professional and recognized recreation department through the whole Midwest, and she's also won national honors for the work that she's done. So, I'd like to read a resolution for Wendy and then present this to Wendy as well. Whereas Wendy McKeeranen has been a dedicated employee of the City of Lake Forest since June 4, 1979, and whereas Wendy McKeeranen will honorably retire from the city on September 30th, 2011, whereas Wendy McKeeranen served the following positions during her dedicated career: Program Manager, June 1979; promoted to Superintendent of Recreation in February 1987; whereas Wendy McKeeranen during her 32 years of service played a pivotal leadership role in greatly expanding recreation programs and services that benefit residents of all ages; whereas Wendy McKeeranen was an instrumental leader in the acquisition, construction, and management oversight of numerous new recreation facilities, including the Recreation Center in 1979, its Fitness Center Dance Studio Expansion in 1998, the Sterling Arts Hall in 2001, Elloa Park and Wildlife Discovery Center in 2005, and Town Line Community Park in 2009. Whereas Wendy McKeeranen helped establish the Friends of Park and Recreation Foundation and played a significant role with this organization, resulting in hundreds of thousands of dollars in fundraising to support critical scholarship and capital needs that benefit the department and the community. Whereas Wendy McKeeranen, while under her supervision as Superintendent of Recreation, led the recreation team in achieving the National Gold Medal Award, the nation's highest honor for excellence in the field of parks and recreation management. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council, the City of Lake Forest, that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Wendy McKeeranen for a public service faithfully performed, and be it further resolved that the city clerk be and hereby is instructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Wendy McKeeranen this 19th day of September, 2011. Congratulations, Wendy. speak this evening, but I think her actions and her work certainly speak for themselves. And thank you for your 32 years. You did an outstanding job. We have another individual this evening who's also retiring, Dan Dool, after 13 years of service. And I'd like to read the resolution for Dan as well. Whereas Dan Dool has been a dedicated employee of the City of Lake Forest since June 24, 1998, whereas Dan Dool will honorably retire from the city on September 30th, 2011, whereas Dan Dool served in the following positions during his dedicated career: He was a Program Manager, June 1998, and whereas Dan Dool was an instrumental leader in greatly expanding cultural art programs, creating memorable and unique special events for all residents of all ages, and overseeing the diverse and nationally acclaimed Lake Forest Dance Academy. Whereas Dan Dool, through his leadership, has credited Sterling Hall into the finest ceramic facility in the region. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Forest, that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Dan Dool for a public service faithfully performed, and be it further resolved that the city clerk be and hereby is instructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Dan Dool this 19th day of September, 2011. Congratulations also to Dan. Did you hear it? There he is. And Dan, we're going to miss your work as well. We again appreciate all your years of service, and I hope you have somebody else with twinkle toes that can step up behind you and run that dance academy. I have a couple more items under my comments in the next. Susan Banks is going to talk to us for a few minutes about the city website update. Susan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a small but very significant enhancement to our website. We've heard from the residents that they have trouble sometimes locating agendas for our meetings. So, the web authors have been working very hard to come up with a very simple solution. So, we've added a topic to our top bar here called Public Meetings, and you can click on Agendas. You will see all the agendas for all of our meetings. You can click on Meeting Videos. It will take you right to the YouTube component of our website, so you can watch any of our meetings. Thirdly, oops, Minutes, where you can check out any minutes from any meeting. The latest minutes posted and approved would be listed. And lastly, a schedule of all the public meetings that are coming up. So, we finally have a consolidated area right on the homepage where all these things will be easy for residents to find what they are looking for. Okay?
Thank you, Susan, and I'm sure that we will continue to make updates as we learn more and grow more and make it easier for residents to get information. That's our primary goal. Thanks for all your hard work in keeping those updates. My last comment this evening is I just want to take a quick minute to thank the fire department, especially the Fire Chief Jeff Howell and Deputy Chief Chris Garrison for performing the 9/11 ceremony last Sunday morning. Not only was it a beautiful morning, but there was certainly a beautiful ceremony for those who came out. They did a tremendous job. It was not a long ceremony, but it was succinct to the point, and I just want to say thank you for all their hard work. They did a very nice job putting that ceremony together. Those conclude my comments. The next item on the agenda is Council Committee Reports, the first being Finance Committee Alderman-Pandeleon.
Thank you, Mayor Cowie. At our previous meeting, the Finance Committee, the members of the Finance Committee approved the award of a contract for auditing service for fiscal year 2012. The City Council approved a contract for professional auditing services to McGladrey &amp; Pullen for the fiscal years ending April 30th, 2007 to April 30th, 2011, and December of 2006. The firm was selected through an RFP process. The Audit Committee has recommended to contract with McGladrey &amp; Pullen LLP for one additional year due to finance department retirements, rather than impose the burden of having to go through the RFP process when they're a little short-staffed. McGladrey is the fifth-largest public accounting firm in the United States. They have over 7,700 professionals in 93 offices across the U.S. and over 1,000 professional staff and partners in offices in Chicago and Schaumburg here locally. McGladrey has significant government audit practice in Chicago, serving over 95 units of government. These include the Chicago Public Schools, the Regional Transportation Authority, Housing Authority of Cook County, and more than 50 suburban villages, cities, school districts, colleges, and special purpose authorities. McGladrey has maintained the same fees as for fiscal year, or the same fees for fiscal year 12, 2012, as they were in fiscal year 2011. And we are recommending that the City Council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with McGladrey &amp; Pullen LLP for professional auditing services for the fiscal year ending April 30th, 2012, and for an amount not to exceed $70,300 for the regular audit, $5,200 for special reports, and $11,600 for a single audit. Any questions?
For George?
Okay. The second item, which was also approved at tonight's meeting of the Finance Committee.
Can we make a motion to approve?
Do we need to have a motion on that? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman-Novitt?
Aye.
Alderman-Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman-Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman-Morse?
Aye.
Alderman-Shoenhider?
Aye.
Alderman-Eadleman?
Aye.
Seventy-eight, no-nay's, motion carries.
Okay. Next item from the Finance Committee is Purchasing Code Amendments. At the July 18th, 2011 meeting, the Finance Committee approved code amendments to the purchasing policy as was discussed at the previous meeting. The city utilizes about 6,500 vendors. Currently, the City Council approves any single purchase over $20,000. There are 27 vendors representing roughly 0.4% of the city budget on a list that's been developed that have fallen into a gray area where some of the vendors have been approved by the City Council long ago, but started out as small payments and now have accumulated to exceed the $20,000 expenditure level. Recommendations from the staff were to approve that these vendors could be approved each year at the first meeting in May, and then when the budget is, well, when the budget is approved, that they be rebid every three to five years, that these vendors would be approved each year at the December meeting since they're based on a calendar year, and that the vendors or types of vendors, certain types of vendors, could be approved by the city manager up to $75,000 per fiscal year, those being repeat purchase vendors such as suppliers of automotive parts and things like that, which can add up. But these items are all pre-approved in the budget prior to the beginning of the year. The Finance Committee is recommending approval of these purchasing code amendments. I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman-Novitt?
Aye.
Alderman-Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman-Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman-Morse?
Aye.
Alderman-Shoenhider?
Aye.
Alderman-Eadleman?
Aye.
Seventy-eight, no-nay's, motion carries.
Thank you, Birdie, and thank you, Alderman-Pandeleon. That concludes the first two items. The next item is comments by council members.
Mr. Mayor, I did have a couple if I would.
Yes.
Just want to let everyone know that last week, the Plan Commission had an informational presentation presented by Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital. No action was taken at the Plan Commission. However, the purpose was to really talk about master planning of the campus and future considerations. It gave the community, obviously, opportunities to raise questions and issues. The city has actually developed a list of over 400 people who have asked for more specific, very current information about what's happening with the future plans for the campus. I would encourage anyone who wants to get more specific information to call the Community Development Department and ask to have your name put on the list, and you'll be added to that list of 400. There'll be some other future Plan Commission meetings as the hospital begins to define more of what the plans are, what their goals and objectives are as they continue down the line. There'll be some additional Plan Commission meetings. There'll be public notices of those, so please keep an eye out for those. And I did also want to mention that Woodlands tomorrow, Woodlands Academy, will hold a community meeting at 7:00 PM tomorrow in the chapel on the Woodlands campus to discuss the pending gift from an anonymous donor of the Bear property. Again, it's something that's gotten a lot of attention, obviously, in the community, and I would encourage anyone out there to come participate and hear what plans that Woodlands may have for the project. And the last thing, not to play community billboard, but I will. If you haven't already done so, please, Susan mentioned the website, we are still in the process of having a survey for the Bicycle Master Plan, and if you haven't already done so, and if you could jump on the website and fill out that survey, that would be incredibly helpful. We're trying to gather that information to help us proceed with that project. So, take a couple minutes when you're surfing the site and jump over that survey. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman-Shoenhider. Any other? Yes?
Yeah, I meant to mention this at the last City Council meeting. Two, three weeks ago, we were invited, the new councilmen, over to the Senior Resources Center and met with Marla, and as a consequence, I joined. If you're 50 years old or older, you can join the Senior Resources Center, and I'm really saying this for the benefit of you and anybody watching this. There are some tremendous programs over there. Just don't laugh, Tom.
No, no, I think not in my head. I agree.
They've got some tremendous programs, and if they're not directly related to us, as we're aging baby boomers, they pertain to our parents, and they really enlighten you as to how to deal with your parents as they go through the infirmities and whatnot. So, yeah, I'm being a billboard for the Senior Resources Center, and a lot of the programs are free, so I think everybody ought to look into them.
You know what I'd add to that is they have good food as well. I'm telling you, they do, so.
Well, it was an eye-opener for me, too, because to drive up there on a sunny, whatever it was, Wednesday or Thursday morning, it's a beautiful facility. I mean, and it's tucked away where nobody really sees it unless they make a purpose of going there. But it's worth, if you have five minutes, just driving back and taking a look at Dickinson Hall, because it's a real treasure, so.
And that kind of leads into, I will be a community billboard for a few moments, and that was a great lead-in, but the Senior Resources is hosting a lecture series. The first lecture is actually tomorrow night at Dickinson Hall, and these are topics that are relating to transitions in life as issues, be it from financial issues. And the topic tomorrow is a conversation on Alzheimer's and other issues that are associated with that. It's a great program. It's informational. It deals with issues that all of us will have to address and face at certain points in life, and it is a great lecture series. It is available to all residents. So, I appreciate the lead-in mic on that one, and it was a great event, having breakfast and seeing how much food was consumed by the Aldermen also. One comment, though, as far as public works goes, and this is just addressing one thought. The work on the East Side train station is going to be starting shortly. Everyone will see progress on the replacement of the roof. There was some question, or I got a few phone calls, just wondering when it's going to start. It's going to happen shortly. We're all kind of excited for it. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm going to go back to the senior center, and I just go through my packet up here on the dais, but we have a 10th anniversary open house on Friday, September 23rd, 5:00 to 7:00 PM. It says everyone's welcome to attend, so bring a friend, introduce them to Lake Forest Lake Bluff Senior Center. So, I assume they want to know that as well. And they do have good snacks, and that gets me out there anyway. Go ahead. Anything, any other comments by council members?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a, would like to present to the council, for the council's approval, the Deerpath Golf Committee recommended approach. As you may recall from our last City Council meeting, the Golf Committee was formed early this summer, and its mandate was to explore future management options for Deerpath Golf Course in light of identified financial challenges. We interviewed a number of private companies, and we held a well-attended public meeting at which many golfers offered feedback and expressed concerns over privatization. And to those of you who attended the meeting and who may be here tonight, let me just say to you that we listened. We listened, and we considered your views. And I think that I can speak for the entire committee when I say that we found Deerpath to be a very unique issue. There are financial considerations which are real, which are worrisome, and which cannot be ignored. And there are lots and lots of unknowns. There are factors which can impact Deerpath's future either positively or negatively, which are beyond our control. We don't know what's going to happen with Fort Sheridan. We don't know what's going to happen with some of our neighboring golf courses, and we can't control those things. There is as well a very strong emotional component associated with this golf course. There was a gentleman at the public meeting at Gordon, and I don't know his name, but I'm going to quote him, and he spoke of Deerpath and said that what it represented to him was hours and hours and hours of great times. And how do you measure that? So, we have practical financial concerns. We have unknown factors and things which are beyond our control, and we have a strong emotional component. That's what we were dealing with, and those things can be very difficult to balance. The Golf Committee recognizes that Deerpath is an important community asset. It's not unlike Lake Forest Beach, and we Lake Foresters like to maintain and protect our assets. That's the Lake Forest way. But we also recognize that there are some troubling economic trends associated with Deerpath. Simply put, if we don't do something, it's going to cost us. And we're not going to bury our heads in the sand and ignore these trends, and we're not going to continue to take money from one fund to support another, because that is not the Lake Forest way either. So, what to do? After considering these many competing factors, after investigating various management options, and reviewing the feedback from the public meeting, the Golf Committee made a recommendation which we believe is in the best interest of Deerpath and the best interest of the community as a whole. This recommendation was presented to the Parks and Recreation Board on this last Tuesday, and they approved it unanimously. The recommendation, which is in your packets and is up on the overhead projector, is as follows. First and foremost, we recommend that we do not privatize Deerpath Golf Course, that we fill the golf proposition, because Chris is retiring, with a consultant manager, that we utilize this person to bring expertise and capabilities that will help enhance Deerpath's financial and operating performance in areas such as marketing, online reservations, campaigns, marketing campaigns, et cetera. Bob Keighley, who's not here with us tonight, had a great analogy. He spoke of that commercial, I think it's for Verizon, where there's one guy, and there's a whole company behind the guy, and you're not just getting the guy, you're getting the company that stands behind that person. And that's what we're looking for here. We recommend that we establish a golf advisory committee of five to seven Deerpath members or other community volunteers to review and recommend changes. Anyone who's interested in being a member of this committee should contact Mary Van Arsdale, or can contact any member of the committee, including myself or Tom Morse, and we'd be happy to forward your invitation to Mary. And I know we've had a number of volunteers so far, and people have expressed interest, and we very much appreciate that. The reason why we want to form this committee is to continue to receive input from the community. We want to establish goals that Deerpath should achieve over the next few years to strengthen its financial performance. We need to right the ship, and we need to set it on a good course. And finally, we recommend that we secure commitment from the city to invest in Deerpath as needed over the next few years to help it return to a financially viable asset. The advantages of this approach, again, the first one is key. The city maintains control over Deerpath Golf Course. The city also benefits from the best practices of the professional golf management to increase likelihood of improving its financial viability, and we need those best practices. And finally, last but not least, that members and residents, and the people who have golfed at Deerpath for years and years and years, as well as other members of this community, are involved in the operations and future direction of Deerpath Golf Course. That is our recommendation, and we are asking for approval from City Council, including authorization, to proceed with the consultant management search.
Questions or comments here?
And I'll try and be brief. I like the recommendation. To my own way of thinking, I never felt we should privatize the golf course. And let me give you my backdrop. I was never a golfer until this year. In this past winter down in Florida, my 12-year-old demonstrated an affinity towards golf, and I made him a deal. I said, "I'll get us a couple lockers at Deerpath, couple seasons passes, but you have to take lessons," and that's what we did. So, relative to your comment about this strong emotional component, I can relate to that, because after about 40 rounds to date this season, my son and I feel it's like our own little country club, just like on Wednesday is to you and Conway to you probably. I also know, because of a small investment with a childhood friend in a golf-related business, and having consequently been at the PGA Trade Show in '04, '05, and '06, that it's not just the last two years where we had to subsidize this. Golf has been in a downward trend since 2000. So, I think it's commendable that we haven't been in the red for eight years subsequent to that. And then we had the economic collapse in 2007 and '08. So, no matter what we do, we're fighting gale force winds in the golf industry. And all the golf cart manufacturers I talked to back in '04, '05, '06, they all talked about rounds being down and the struggle they're having in the industry, and we're not immune to that. I also think, from my own limited personal knowledge, we can do a lot on the revenue side. There is no online golf reservation system. I'm glued to the Golf Channel. I see Golf Now, where you fill empty tee times on a discounted basis. You can cross-promote. There's a lot that can be done to enhance our revenues. I'm not sure what the answer is, whether it's a city employee or bringing in the outside professional that you, that the committee's recommending, but we have to really work on the revenue side. It's going to be an uphill battle. There are other golf courses falling by the wayside because they have a bigger divergence in income and expenses than we do, and I think if we survive the maelstrom, we'll be that much stronger a golf course in the long run. But it's, you know, two years, I think, is a short timeframe. It's going to take a while.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I've got a couple. I'm assuming that the establishment of the goals that Deerpath must achieve will lead to the amount of subsidy they'll require. Is that kind of how it works?
You mean whether or not those...
Well, it just says there's establishment of goals, but it doesn't say what happens if they're not met, or what happens if they are met, or what they do to establish, what the goals are there for.
Well, if they're not met, we're going to continue to invest in Deerpath as needed for the next several years. for the next several years.
Okay. Any way to quantify that amount before, is there any way to get, I guess, to get, I don't know?
I think that's one of the issues that we're hoping to, as we form this advisory committee, that the advisory committee begin to work on looking at how to grow the revenue of the course and how to grow the number of rounds played, and do that in a way that we can get back to a break-even kind of basis on the golf course. Historically, the golf course has been an enterprise fund, and the debt that is issued by the golf course has been paid for by the fees and everything else. So the idea is to work with Parks and Rec and the advisory committee, and they get together and begin to set some goals about getting back to a break-even type of basis.
I get that. I just was wondering if there was a, as we continue to help the, I guess it's, the language is to invest in Deerpath as needed over the next one to two years, which I'm not a golfer. I'm just wondering, words like invest, does it invest $100 or is it invest $1 million? It'd be good to have, I'm completely unaware of what kind of magnitude of investment is, will be required. Has any of that work been done?
We, I think we had a budget item earlier. We had to make a transfer this year. Mary, you might want to get up and indicate what's happened. We did make a transfer from the general fund into the...
To next year's projection.
And I don't know what next year is, but I think we were talking, you know, we're very hopeful we can start turning things around, but we were starting to talk about six-figure numbers.
This past year, we did around 20, it was $22,600, which was what we had to do to meet the debt ratio gap, and that was transferred over from the recreation fund. We did a five-year, very conservative portfolio with, you know, minimum expense increase and minimum revenue growth as well, again, trying to be conservative where we thought we would be headed. Given that scenario, and we do have some capital this year, we haven't done any capital really of significance the last two years, so there was some capital in there. The worst-case scenario we were looking at is around $100,000 this year. Our hope is by maximizing and utilizing some of the resources that we haven't had in the past, we do have online tee time reservation. However, we didn't have the fiber optic system really to get a higher speed and do some of the more marketing things that we now are going to be able to do with our system capabilities. If we can grow the revenue rounds even slightly, you know, incrementally, and look at our membership fees and do some slight increases there, I think that $100,000 will actually be reduced, but we put into the worst-case kind of scenario. Going forward, that could potentially be our issue every year unless we can continue to make that traction, if you will, in growing the revenue rounds. So I think the good news is we have a great product. We don't have a product issue. We have an awareness issue and a marketability issue, and that's really where we need to focus, I think.
So $50,000 to $150,000 per year in that range?
Yeah, yeah. We didn't really have much larger than that. The one year that really spiked was because we showed somewhere in the next five years we may need to do the parking lot at the golf course, either resurface it or add some additional drains there, and that was a pretty big item. But other than that, everything, that's when it spiked. But other than that, we were pretty...
So this plan here adopts the budget that we've seen in the past over the, for the golf course?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
This plan here adopts the budget that we've seen projected forward?
No, we haven't done the budget. It was just a pro forma to help the community understand the issue that we may be facing. So you'll see the budget come through for the next fiscal year, will come through this fall for review by City Council.
Just to clarify something you said, just for my own notification about what the real issue is here. Alderman, Mooreish mentioned before that the golf course is an enterprise fund, which means it issues its own debt. So there are bonds that the city has issued that are backed up by the golf course, that are backed up by the revenues and free cash flow, if you will, of the golf course. Those bonds have covenants associated with them.
Correct.
Certain financial ratios have to be met, and if those ratios are not met, what are the consequences?
Really the...
To city obligations.
So it's a city obligation, so the golf course itself can't default, but the city has to step in. If that doesn't happen, then there's a default on the bond, correct?
Yeah, the city steps.
So the city has to step in. Otherwise, there would be a default on the bonds, which would probably jeopardize our AAA cap, AAA credit rating, which was just affirmed by, at least by Moody's, and would affect the overall cost of living in Lake Forest and would increase everybody's taxes because we'd have to pay more interest on all the debt that we issue. So these are, I mean, these are just facts. So, so, let me, excuse me. If you default on bonds, there are bad consequences. So this is not something that we, and the city is stepping in, has stepped in, made transfers from other funds to support the bond payments that could no longer be supported by the golf course. But when those bonds were issued, the expectation was that they would be supported by the golf course. So this is, this is now, you know, a transfer from the golf, to the golf course of other... Am I getting the issue relatively correct?
That is correct.
I mean, there may be arguments about it, but the fact is, these bonds are issued by the golf course and were expected to be supported by the golf course.
Correct.
And if for some reason the city wasn't able to support it, there would be serious consequences for the whole city.
If I can just interject, there are coverage ratios.
Yes.
Now, if the coverage ratio on the debt service is one to one, then I understand, then it's a wash. If the coverage rate ratio is 1.2 to one, then the city is having to transfer funds to the golf course enterprise just to meet the coverage ratio, but that extra 20% isn't really being spent for anything. So then, what is a coverage ratio? Does somebody know?
No, it was spent, that's why they came up short.
A coverage ratio is a covenant that you agree to when you...
No, no, no. What is the coverage ratio? So 1.25?
1.25.
Okay, so what happens with the extra 0.25?
These were issued as what's known as alternative double-borough bonds. It means that we had a revenue source that was to cover the debt service based on a ratio, in this case 1.25, which is the statutory requirement. If you don't meet that ratio, then what happens is a property tax kicks in to make up the difference. What the city has done to avoid the property tax is it's transferred monies from our general fund to the enterprise fund so that the coverage is met and no additional tax is levied against the residents. I think as Alderman Panaleone pointed out, if all things just started to unravel and we defaulted on the bonds, that could have some serious consequences. Fortunately, these types of bonds have a number of different stopgaps, so it's unlikely we're ever going to get to that level of draconian outcome. But I think it's still an important consideration for the council as you look at the overall golf course issue, and particularly its debt service, to understand that in order to avoid either the transfer or the imposition of the automatic property tax increase, is that we're going to need to get that ratio up, and that's the revenue issue.
I get all that, but let's say hypothetically, we'll use a simple mathematical example. If our debt service is $100,000, so that in a coverage ratio of this 1.25, that means the city transferred enough money so that there was $125,000 to cover the $100,000 of debt service. The debt service still was only 100, so there was an extra $25,000 transferred from the city to the enterprise fund that's not necessarily expended, it's sitting there.
It's in the reserve fund for the golf course, which still exists. We have the 15% reserve fund requirement for the golf course.
So the transfer is a little bit misleading. The transfer is because we have an accelerated coverage ratio, but we're one to one, then we're meeting each dollar of deficit with a dollar of transfer.
Correct. And the other thing I would just...
That's my only point.
I'd like to just point out is that, you know, one of the recommendations, and we did it this past year, was actually we did take the money from the general fund. We chose to take it from the recreation fund. And the reason that we, I feel that as the Director of Parks and Recreation that we have that capability is, as you know, we're required to have a 15% surplus fund on our operational funds. In the recreation fund, not only do we have the 15% surplus fund that we need for the recreation operations, we have an excess of half a million dollars in that account above and beyond that due to the outstanding fiscal performance that we've had the last several years in recreation. It is not in the capital, but it's in the operation side of it. So we do have the wherewithal for the next few years to utilize some money from the recreation fund without, you know, impacting other funds of the city to help, if you will, meet that gap that may arise. But as we said, with the intent with the goals is to instill in the golfers an opportunity to work with us to minimize that as much as possible so that we don't have to take out of those kind of reserves and put ourselves in further jeopardy. But we're all working together to identify ways and the importance of making this golf course stronger for the long haul, not just, like I think Michael, you know, said it well, is that this isn't going to probably be a one-year thing. It's not like we have a one-year correction. We've got a long-picture correction to make, and I think we have the wherewithal, fortunately, to be in the situation we are with the recreation fund, to be able to assist this operation just like we do the beach, just like we do, you know, special events in the community, just like we do some of our other special areas that provide a quality recreational service. So I do feel we have the funding ability to support in the interim until we can find if we can get the traction for the long term. And that's what we really have to understand right now. Where are our opportunities here? As I said, we've got a great product. We just got to do a lot better job of understanding how to market it and how to price it to make it as the most effective product that's out there. So hopefully.
I have a couple of questions about next steps, if I can ask Tom and Kathy and maybe Mary. So the next step from here, there's an assumption that a, kind of a profile of this consultant manager has been developed or is going to be developed, right?
Correct.
And that person would not be a city employee.
Correct.
It would be a contract employee from a contract professional golf management company. For a two-year period, three-year period, five-year period, do we know that?
I don't think that's finalized at this point. I think we're just trying to throw a concept out with you here, and then we'll go further in the process and come back to you. You wouldn't, you'd have to approve anything.
Okay.
So there's no...
So that was Tom, that was my next question.
Yeah, this is not approval tonight of anything. This is just a status and a, here's what we're going to do next in terms of process.
Approval to go forward.
Well, you're looking for an approval to proceed with the consultant manager's search.
With that concept. Yeah, with that concept, and then that those proposals would have to go before Parks and Rec first and then that...
And given that, obviously, Chris is going to retire, and that this person, again, it strikes me as a profile, this person is more of a marketing consultant. Who runs the place day to day?
Well, actually, it's a combination of things. We're looking for a manager, operations manager as well, somebody that can assist us with that analysis of our rounds and our marketing opportunities. Most of the time, golf courses have a golf course manager, and they, that is what part and parcel of what their roles are. I think our challenge has been, we've used Chris as not only that operations person in the clubhouse running just the pro shop, he's run lessons for about half of his time. And so he has not been able to carry also the role of marketing and doing the financial analysis and some of that that you would typically find in your golf manager position.
So is the idea, Mary, then, to separate Chris's role into two? Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, we would have lessons be a separate, no longer be part of the manager's role of being out teaching lessons, but they would spend their time devoted to management, marketing, and helping us strategize on how best to grow the revenues.
So, but again, I'm back to, you wouldn't have someone there giving lessons and kind of functioning in a professional, for lack of a better term, you know, a PGA professional role?
We got one, and that could, Richard, Chris brought in Richard Franklin last year, 27-year-old.
So there's someone there already?
He runs the golf camp.
That was my, and forgive me because I don't play Deerpath.
No, that's it.
That was my question. Is there someone there to take that role that Chris is going to leave behind?
Correct.
And I think that's important to have that.
Right. And we do have that currently with Richard Franklin, and we haven't really talked about the long-term picture with him. We do it, you know, as a, each year as we look at our season coming up, and he has a lot of great ideas to how we can grow some revenue at the golf course. I think he's a dynamic professional that's been a little bit on the, he's professionally toured and played, as well as runs this golfing school basically in three locations down in the city and Oak Brook and with us. And, you know, I think he's got a lot of potential, and he is willing and interested in taking on that lesson component that Chris did under his wing, and, you know, he has his own staff then, and there, he's an independent contractor.
Yeah, that was my next question. He's not a city employee.
So he's not a city employee. We do not have insurance. We do not have benefits that we have to pay for him. It's strictly, if he grows the revenue, he gets a portion of it, we get a portion of it, so...
And then my last question is, who makes the decision on, who makes up the golf advisory committee? Is that you, Mary? Is it you and the committee?
Well, we haven't really talked that through.
We haven't talked it through.
I've had more than a few people call me and say, "Hey, I want to, I've got marketing expertise. I feel strongly about this place. I want to contribute, and I can make a difference."
Right now, I'm just collecting names and interests.
I think at the end of the day, we're really, probably going to delegate that to Bob Kylie. And I think, you know, Mary or Kathy or myself, please get resumes, and we'll get them over to Bob and him.
Okay. Is there a lot of people out there that want to be involved?
Yeah, and we really, I think during the course of the discussions, we really want to make sure that we include people who are playing there and our members and are actively involved in the programs at Deerpath so that they can have an ongoing input into what goes on in the golf course.
Can I ring in on that one? Because I came up with that...
Do you want to be on the committee?
No, 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 no. I came up with the idea about a board for the golf course, independent of the committee, because I'm thinking we've got a BRB, an HPC, a plan commission, a zoning board of appeals. This is a little jewel that the city has, and it really deserves oversight by a board of the constituents, and maybe a member from Knoll, and I'm just throwing this out there, you guys can figure it out, there's all sorts of ways to slice this up. A member from Knollwood, from Onwensia, from Conway, people from Deerpath, people who understand golf a little bit, and then maybe some non-golfers. But I think a board that met monthly, that got input from a public audience, could germinate all sorts of tremendous ideas potentially, even if you come away with one or two kernels.
And that was, that was where I was going with this.
Oh, sorry.
Like, thank you, no. Is who does this person report to?
Oh, back to the golf manager.
Right.
That person will report to Jeff Waite, who's our superintendent of special facilities. He just started with us, and he's a part of the Recreation Staff Division superintendents.
Who's that?
So Jeff Waite. And so we have golf, fitness, wildlife discovery center, lakefront operations, and marketing are underneath Jeff.
So Jimmy, I don't know Jeff, and my assumption is he's not a golf person. I don't know. Wouldn't it make sense to piggyback with Mike's comment, to have this person report to a committee or the golf committee or, I mean, if we're, if we're going to charge this person with driving the revenues and adding to the marketing and the visibility of the golf course, I would think it would, he should report, he or she should report to someone that would give him responsibility for doing that. I mean, it seems like there should be a different piece of that, Mary, somewhere.
Well, I mean, I guess what I'm, we, all of us as staff, we all report to a different, you know, person here, and we have our own goals and expectations set, and those will be discussed, and we will, you know, pursue and discuss, you know, review whatever they're recommending us to do. However, that's one of the reasons we do want some of the benchmarks, but to see where we can go and how we can grow this. But it's, it's a personnel position, and I think it's important that they are a part of the staffing overall team, and we're all working to support each other from Jeff above, and I'm above Jeff as an example, as well as Tom and Gil who are maintenance and everybody will need to work together to integrate all the services out there to deliver that best product. So I think it's part of a staffing team. This isn't so much a consultant that's coming in for a month and then leaving us. You know, this is going to be somebody with us for a year or two, and they, in essence, are an independent contractor that we would treat just as if we would other independent contractors, as if they're a staff of our department. The city manager will be very involved in it, so...
Again, maybe that's the answer. I guess I'm looking for someone, you know, there's two pieces to this. The quality of the golf course, which I played Friday and it's great, and maintaining the quality of that golf course, and then building the revenue base. And I don't, I guess I'm just concerned that the building the revenue base doesn't have kind of that conduit. Maybe that conduit's to you, or maybe it's to Bob, or maybe it's to a separate committee. But I don't want to set that person up to fail if they've got a couple different roles. I want to maintain the quality of the golf course, but I also want them to be judged on the growth of the revenue and where we get to from a financial side. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, those are all good points, and I think as we start to talk to individuals about the position, and I think these are topics, Mary, that we ought to be making sure that they're part of the discussions. Because that makes a lot of sense.
And I think part of that too was that, Don, that the thought, my understanding was, Kathy, they were going to the, you know, the third-party golf management company, is that they're bringing, you know, again, that expertise with them, not that individual, but that company behind them. So you're, you know, you have an, you have a body, but you have this, you know, entity behind it which is supposedly helping you with setting up best practices that have been done at other facilities, and you're getting that knowledge and gaining all that as well. So I assume that's part of the whole reason for bringing in that third party. Is that correct? for bringing in that third party. Is that correct?
That should all be in the business plan, that the company that we work with is going to, you know, incorporate as far as who they give to us and what they can envision bringing to us comprehensively behind that individual. And they're going to be important to assess that as well. They, they want to see success out there too, because this is their reputation as far as their, their quality of their staffing that they're providing to us for this, this portion of our, of our team. So, I think, I think it's a, everybody here is in, in this to deliver the highest quality results that we can, and we will have to monitor that as we go along.
And Mary, am I correct in assuming that we'll be reviewing every year, as I think we always do, what the performance is and what we're doing well, what we can do better?
Well, not only, not only do I think we'll do it annually, we'll be doing it probably monthly as we see how the reports come in and where we need to target it. Because if we see daily rounds aren't growing at the pace we'd hoped, you know, we need to come back to the table and talk about that and say, what did we miss here? Where are we not, you know, attracting that we want to, you know, pull from? So, I think, again, that's the, that's the need for the goals and the benchmarks so that we all can focus on that. And when we, if we don't hit that, we need to then say, what's our corrective action?
Right.
You know, what are we going to do next month that will get it going in the direction we want to? So, I think there has to be kind of a constant monitoring of this new relationship. This will be a little bit different relationship than just an employee of ours, because you've got the complexity of working with a consultant agreement with the heightened awareness of some financial challenges on our horizon. It's going to really take a lot of, you know, attention from us, and I think, I think deservedly. So, it should be that way. So...
And we'll, we'll be getting input from the advisory committee as well.
Yes, I think we, we want to utilize the talents of the advisory committee. I know Tom and Kathy, and we talked a little bit about making sure that the skill set that we place onto that advisory committee is they, they bring value to the table. You know, that every person that's on there has something to give of experience that we can then utilize in a golfing environment or a business environment so that we take it from that approach, not just the emotional love of the course, but truly an emotional love plus, you know, some value from a business side of the coin. So, I think that's going to be where we'll have to really kind of sift through all the names we're getting and really, you know, try to see what we can set up. I mean, another thing came up at the park board meeting was not only setting up the golf advisory committee, but a year from now, we may want to spur it off and have just a marketing committee that, as a subcommittee that stays connected with this course for, you know, a long-term benefit for the course. And, you know, we do have other steering committees and parent, you know, specialized group with recreation. We have the parent board who assists us with the Dance Academy program, which is, as you know, nationally-ranked dance company. We have a parent board that assists us with the sailing program. We have the steering committee with the Wildlife Discovery Center. And bringing in that community contact and getting feedback from them and guidance from them has been invaluable, I think, for strengthening those in the last few years. So, I think it is time, long overdue probably in many ways, to form this for the golf course. And not just for this time, but, you know, for the long haul. But...
Couple of questions, comments. You mentioned this Jeff Waite. Is this a new position?
This was part of the reorganization from early retirement.
And his title is?
Superintendent of Special Facilities.
And it's not just the golf course?
No.
And he's a city employee?
He's a city employee.
So, we're going to be allocating some of our expenses? Now, we're going to go back into our expenses and allocate some of those to the rec board?
Well, right now, we have 20% of my salary allocated towards the golf course. I know some people are using 30. That's incorrect. It's 20. But, you know, it's 20% of my salary. We currently do not charge any of the superintendent salaries to the golf course, and we haven't in the last, you know...
And Jeff Waite's any of his salary?
At this point, he is budgeted under the Recreation Fund because, with the exception of the golf course, all the other facilities are in the Recreation Fund. And by eliminating supervisory positions that we had vacant or that we didn't, we chose not to fill with retirees, we've used that salary to fund the superintendent position. So, there's not, been no increase in salary expense for the city for that position.
Okay, but it's not clear to me, or is the golf course going to be paying for a percentage of Jeff Waite's salary?
Not at this time. It's not proposed in the budget.
Okay, because I would hate to see that happen.
Yeah, it's not proposed as part of the budget going forward.
Because I think this person that we're going to bring in should have the expertise to run the golf course.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. And the other thing is, you've touched on rounds. In that report that the consultant did for us that was out last spring, talked about our rounds and the trend, and at one time, we peaked at 39,000 rounds. I think it said we're down to 33 or 31?
Thirty-three, 33.
Yeah. 33,000 rounds is tremendous for the Chicago metropolitan area compared to other municipal and private golf courses.
Exactly.
39,000 rounds was phenomenal. Do we send our people down to the PGA show, and then a month later, there's a golf superintendent's show also in Orlando? Do we send them down there?
They have, Chris has attended at times. You know, we've had different staff go to different golf events. Not every year, but Chris has attended every few years, you know, for that.
The superintendent's show might be one.
And I know Tom, as an example, meets with the superintendents of maintenance throughout, there's a whole, you know, Chicagoland Greater Golf Association. He meets with them at their round tables and participates in that throughout the different meetings that they hold during the year. So, they are involved from those professional school levels. So...
And if I can also add, Richard Franklin, he's phenomenal.
Oh, good.
My son and I started with Chris, and then Chris kind of directed us to Richard. And so, my son did the three-week camp there. I'm amazed at how many young people there are at the golf course and how good they are. It's unbelievable. So, it's a tremendous resource we have there. We should do whatever we can to uplift it.
Couple of questions. Going back to Alderman Moore's initial question about this last bullet point about securing commitment from the city to invest in the, in the course. What I'm hearing between the lines is a sort of implication or a suggestion that we may not have invested over the years, and so, we don't have web capabilities that might be beneficial, and that the idea, is the idea behind that, and I'd ask Mary or Kathy or Tom, is the idea behind that, that with, in order to get to some of these best practices, there's going to be a need to commit some financial resources most likely?
No, I think, and I, I guess we wanted to use the word invest in terms of a positive comment, because we felt and heard from many people that the golf course is such a tremendous asset. So, from an asset standpoint, we felt that as we go forward, we need to make the kind of investment either in talent or otherwise to get it on the, on the course that will be continued success. It's been successful for how many years? Eighty years?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four. Eighty-four years it's been successful, and we want to keep it successful for another eighty-four. So, we use the word invest as opposed to subsidize Franklin.
Right.
Okay.
I was thinking, well, I was thinking about legitimate investments where there'd be a return, you know?
Yeah, there may be systems that'll have to be replaced or brought in, yeah. But that will be part and parcel, I think, the next round of discussions we'll have with the individuals that we would bring in.
I have a, I'm sorry.
One, one last question. Mary, what percentage of your time do you spend on the golf course?
Well, that we've, it varies during the different time of the year. That's why we went with the 20%, assuming that, when I first arrived here, I spent more time at the golf course, obviously getting to know the staff and the situation out there. As I realized, we did not have staff that could execute the marketing needs of the course. I got very involved in the marketing. Then, we got involved with adding the online tee time reservation and researching all of that. Then, we got into the replacement of the carts and the fleets and the capital. So, you know, I do spend time, you know, on the golf course assisting with where we're headed and, you know, looking at that. So, I've played more of that over-umbrellaed person, you know, for the golf course, because our, our departments kind of function independently of each other with some overlap, and so, I've played that role.
Do you see that declining over time as we reorganize here?
You know, I, I would like to pull back a little bit on that and utilize the expertise, hopefully, of our new golf manager, as well as with Jeff's position assisting with that. But I think there's a lot of marketing opportunity here that we can overlap with the other facilities, whether it's a fitness membership and a golf membership, women's marketing, there's a whole host of those things. And I think Jeff's leadership in that will help us take, you know, advantage of it without having it to be solely at the expense of the golf course. It'll be funded by the other areas. So...
Thank you.
I had a question, I think, for Vic. I'm not quite sure. But if we, if we were to, and before the motion happens, if we were to move to approve the golf committee's recommendation, and the last bullet point that I keep going back to is that we secure a commitment to, from the city to invest in Deer Path, are we, is that a blank check?
No, I, I think that the motion tonight is really just a thumbs up, you're doing the right thing, but everything's going to have to come back to that has any financial implications, whether it's the contract with the director slash consultant.
So, we don't have to put a dollar limit on it. The language is fine for that, and...
Right. This, again, this is just a motion, as indicated, it's a motion to approve the recommendation, which is merely a thumbs up going forward. Everything's going to have to come back with any kind of financial implication, whether it's a transfer or other investment, whether it's the contract with the, with the manager consultant. So, this is just, if you approve it, an endorsement with the concept, which is then going to have to be refined for further review and consideration by y'all.
David, and when we do the budget-
So, the discussion of the $150,000 or $100,000?
That's going to be a separate issue that's going to have to come before you either do the-
We're not setting an expectation by discussing it tonight and approving this.
We're going to have to approve that in a budget.
Right.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure that we're not...
Right.
You can, you can just state that for the record if, if you want to make sure that's the case.
No, it's okay, as long as it's the case. And then the bullet point right above it, I think, Mary, you nailed it right on the head there. I think if we could just add to that bullet point, if we don't meet those goals, then define the corrective action. I think that's a, because it's kind of a half of a point if you don't...
And to offer any kind of assurance, Alderman Moore and members of the council, I would suggest whatever vote is taken, it'd be done by a voice vote. That way, you can't authorize any expenditures, and you have that assurance as well.
That's a good point.
One, one last question on, to follow up, and this is a quick one. Is there anybody, are there any other, call them executive-level salaries that are allocated to the golf course?
Not executive level, no. We have-
So, you're the highest-level person?
I'm the highest level.
Who has any dollars of your salary allocated to the golf course? Because somebody made a comment to me over the telephone one day that Bob Kylie had 30% of his salary allocated to the golf course.
Back in the eighties, when it was making a lot of money, and there was all kinds of different situations, that was a little different allocation amongst salaries, but that was corrected a long time ago. So, currently, I am the only executive employee who has any wages applied to the golf course.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I think it's a good plan.
Okay. If not, I'd entertain a motion for the approval of the golf committee's recommendation.
Excuse me. Do we open this to the public? Do we open this for public comment?
Well, we can have comments if you like. Yeah, it's usually, if you would, we'll entertain that. I would simply ask that, we try not to be redundant. I know a lot of folks are going to be here, but if you want to come on up, we usually limit that to two or three minutes at the most. Just state your name, your address, and, and we'll hear your comment.
My name is Brian Weston. I'm a resident of Lake Forest. I live in 1191 Estate Lane. I think there was a euphoria from all of the members when we heard that you were not going to go to a private organization, and a great sigh of relief from the emotional side of the golf course. However, I did take a closer look at the proposal, and I have a proposal, which is, I think, one that maybe you want to take a look at, because it has a certain simplicity. I stated in a letter to Mary Van Arzil and to you, Mayor Cowley, that the notion of using consultants from a private management company to run the management and marketing of Deer Path's operation does not appear the best solution for delivering long-term alternatives. Instead, I urge a moratorium on the hiring of any private management person in a management capacity at Deer Path for two to three years. I then suggested and proposed upon Marzalak's retirement, offer as a contract employee management to the golf shop operation to Randy Gardner, currently working there. He will cover the shop, the range, starting times, carts, rangers, league events, et cetera. He knows the operation, course employees, and golf and information technology systems. Very important, he knows the members and is very well-liked, and has a sound business background and government management going back 30-odd years. Also, Laura will be an able assist to him. Grounds and maintenance would remain with Tommy Wilson. And we would retain Richard Franklin, which has been discussed, as a head teaching pro, possibly with assistance from Larry Utley, and who knows under a contracting, you could even bring Chris in to help and make sure you have a PGA teaching group that is first-class. I also read very carefully the National Golf Foundation report to you in February, and these key points are extracted, excuse me. The state, they state that management structure is not a guarantee, or private one, of an improved golf facility, nor of net economic performance. They also state that Deer Path is currently generating rounds played that is amongst the highest in the local market. And the 428 resident and 94 non-resident pass holders is the key reason for the above-average rounds played at Deer Path. These are the core members, and they do not want to see private management in any form at the moment at Deer Path. Other key statements, Deer Path is revenue-challenged. I think that is true of all golf courses. I accept that. But has a very pedestrian approach to marketing, and all forms of website communications need strengthening. Relative to these comments to Mary, I recommended setting up three voluntary committees of current retired senior business executives from the Deer Path Annual Membership for marketing, data processing, and finance. These groups will present to you cost-effective ideas to stimulate extra rounds, promotions, enhancements to the reservation system, better use of email for communications, both within membership and outside golfers. Hopefully, these suggestions would help control costs. If some ideas were acceptable, keep present members happy and involved in the future of Deer Path. And as a marketing man, I have one closing comment to make. In closing, thanks for listening, and remember the golden rule of marketing. Know your key user base, keep them loyal and happy. It's far less costly to maintain your base than try to regain them after you lose them. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Any other individual? Yes?
Good evening. My name is Mary Lou Reed. I live at 1715 West Broadland Lane, Lake Forest. I think one of the things that's been overlooked as a source of revenue for Deer Path Golf Course is the $8 million park and recreation budget. And the reason I mention this is that you seem to single out Deer Path as needing to be separately financially viable, while Lake Forest Beach doesn't need to be financially viable, every soccer field and baseball diamond doesn't need to be financially viable. There's an $8 million budget here. And the population of Lake Forest, over 50% of us are over 50 years old, and we don't use playsets, soccer fields, and baseball diamonds. And the golf course is something that's open to all ages, but, you know, those of us that are over 50 do use the golf course as a main source of recreation. You cited in our August 30th meeting that in the past year, $22,600 was allocated from the park and rec budget. For the first time in the history of the golf course, that any city funds was allocated to the golf course. I just want to put that in perspective. Over the years that we've had this golf course, you allocated $22,600. In contrast, this year, over $150,000 was spent on Waveland Park for a playset and a revised picnic area, as a result of 22 people answering a survey. As Brian pointed out, we have over 458 members of Deer Path Golf Course, and we only got $22,600. So, proportionately speaking, the golf course has certainly been under-endowed from many taxpayer dollars. And in terms of hours of use of the various facilities of the park and rec, by 7,513 resident rounds as presented on August 30th, that means that 30,052 hours were used on that golf course this year. Can anyone say that there were 32, or 30,052 hours used at Waveland Park for 100, over $150,000? There needs to be a serious revision of the allocation of- to be a serious revision of the allocation of park and recreation dollars to reflect the use of the age of the taxpayers in the city of Lake Forest and where they use their time. While not everybody's a golfer, not everybody's a soccer player or a baseball player, or are less than 12 years old. So I would just like to say that, as a source of revenue for the golf course, rather than concentrating on having to make it a financially independent thing as owned by the city of Lake Forest, we need to allocate equal dollars to where the hours of use are spent. And we also need to establish the golf committee, advisory committee first, before anyone is hired, because the residents and the members of the golf course, who are intimately involved with the golf course, need to have input into how it's being run. And I thank Mary for letting us know tonight, you know, how to volunteer, because I've been, this past year, the chair of the Thursday G&amp;T League. I've been a tournament chair for the Wednesday League as a member of the golf team, and I've been the event chair for the Tuesday League. And so I'm intimately involved and have been a member of Deer Path for five years now. And so I, for one, would like to volunteer, and I thank Mary for letting us know how to do that. But I think that I would like to put on the table that the park and recreation committee needs to allocate a significant part of the budget in relation to the hours that people spend on the golf course, rather than having to look to generate all this revenue. I do agree that we do need to generate the revenue from outside people, because obviously, we can't support it entirely, but we need to get a fair share of the taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening? If not, we'll bring it back here. Any other comments or suggestions? If not, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval of the golf committee's recommended approach to the management of Deer Path Golf Course, including authorization to proceed with the consultant-manager search.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The motion carries. Our next item on the agenda this evening is opportunity for public to address the city council on non-agenda items. Do we have any public on non-agenda items this evening? Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda this evening. One is approval of adding additional cab business license. The second is approval of minutes from September 6, 2011, regular city council meeting. I would ask that we take these separately, because the first one is gonna require a roll-call vote. The second is a voice vote. So do I have a recommendation for the approval of the first item, which is the adding the additional cab business license? I know we went through this at an earlier council meeting once before.
I'll move for the approval of the additional taxi license.
Second.
The second. That's a roll-call vote, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Panelyan.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seventy-eight, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you, Birdie. That motion carries. The second item is the approval of the minutes from September 6, 2011, regular city council meeting.
And so move to approve the minutes from the September 6, 2011 council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries. Our next item is ordinances. The first being a consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of a special use permit authorizing a non-retail use, Koenig and Stray Real Estate Office to locate at 280 East Deer Path. We have an option here of waiving the first reading, and if desired by the city council, grant final approval of ordinance presented by Director of Community Development Kathy Serniak. Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a unanimous recommendation to the council from the Plan Commission. Last week, the Plan Commission heard a request from Koenig and Stray with the support of the property owner, James Altunian, requesting a special use permit to allow the real estate office to occupy space on the north side of Deer Path at 280 Deer Path. Real estate offices, like other non-retail uses such as banks, do require special uses in the central business district. They are not prohibited. This isn't a variance, but the special use process allows the Plan Commission and the city council to really look at the spaces and determine whether the space being proposed for use as an office is a prime retail space, or if it's appropriate for a non-retail use. In this case, this space, most recently, was occupied by Coyote Logistics. Prior to that, was occupied by Caldwell Banker for many, many years. Plan Commission, as I noted, did unanimously recommend approval, and if you choose to do so, be appropriate to waive first reading and grant final approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The only question I had, and again, this is, we have a few sales tax-generating businesses that are adjacent to this spot, and I realize historically, this has been used as a real estate office. But concern is that the parking there might somehow choke or negatively impact the businesses that are adjacent to the west, and I'm just trying to figure what they're doing as far as parking.
The ordinance for this special use permit is included in your packet, I think, beginning on page 31. And as part of that, the Plan Commission recommended a number of conditions. Those conditions are the same conditions that were attached to the special use permit for prudential preferred properties further north on Western Avenue, and also for Caldwell Banker when they moved out of the space west on Deer Path, to the corner of Oakwood and Deer Path. In particular, one of those conditions speak directly to parking. It is acknowledged that the on-street spaces are intended for customers of all the businesses in the central business district. So real estate agents are required to purchase permits and to park off-site, and in fact, if it is determined that agents or employees of the real estate office are using on-street parking, not only could they be ticketed for that if it's in violation of the laws for parking on the street, but that could be determined to be a violation of the special use permit. Special use permits can be revoked at the discretion of the city council. To date, with Caldwell Banker and prudential preferred properties, I'm not naive to say that we don't have some violations, but I think when we do see violations, we've been able to remind the managers of those offices that customer spaces are really intended for customers. In this case, you do have the Oakwood Lot, Oakwood and Deer Path Lot, located not far away, and on the east side of the tracks, you have the McKinley Lot. So parking is a concern. On the flip side of that, having these offices near the central business district, and yet not in prime retail spaces, do bring people into the business district to lunch, hopefully to shop. So it is that balance.
Thanks. I just wanna make sure there's something, and everyone can be assured that we are watching out for the existing businesses. Thanks.
We are.
It might be a little off-point, but realtors aren't allowed to park on-street in front of their offices?
The way these special use permits have been written, again, starting with prudential...
So for those two offices?
Moving to Caldwell, the ordinance specifically call out that neither employees, administrative employees, nor real estate agents are supposed to be parking on-street. So the ordinance really tries to hit that issue hard.
So when they complain to me about having to move their car every 90 minutes, I should... They don't have to move it if they're parked in the right spot, though.
Correct.
Very good. Should I, is it appropriate to make the motion to waive first reading?
Yes.
You may.
Hi, Justin?
Second.
Do we have a voice vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? The waiving the first reading passes, and if you so desire, we'd entertain a motion to grant final approval of the ordinance.
I'll make the motion to grant final approval.
Second.
That's a roll-call vote, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Panelyan.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seventy-eight, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you, Birdie. And Kathy's gonna stay right there, because we have another very similar proposal under number two, consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of a special use permit authorizing a non-retail use at Properties Real Estate Office to locate at 600 Northwestern Avenue. This is, again, an option to waive first reading, and if desired by the city council, grant final approval of the ordinance, and Kathy Serniak will present as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, this comes to you with a unanimous recommendation from the Plan Commission, and really is part of essentially a real estate office shuffle. At Properties currently does not have an office in town, although they do do business in town. They, their request is to allow them, through a special use permit, to move into the space at 600 Northwestern Avenue, the space being vacated by Koenig and Stray as they move around the corner to Deer Path. I won't repeat what I've said, but again, this is a location that historically has been occupied by non-retail use for many, many years. This is not in a prime retail location, and the Plan Commission forwarded a unanimous recommendation in support of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and if you choose to do so, be appropriate to waive first reading and grant final approval. Alderman Morse?
I had a question. Did the Plan Commission discuss, I recognize that the motion here is to approve the use for these tenants. Did they, it seemed to trickle, trigger to me when you mentioned Coyote Logistics, which I don't recall coming before city council? Can, is there a provision that we could add in that in the event these tenants are not, no longer there, that it would have to come back to city council for approval?
The special use permit is specifically for the businesses, specifically for Koenig and Stray, specifically for At Properties, Coyote Logistics...
Why didn't, we didn't do Coyote Logistics?
Because banks specifically, and real estate offices specifically are special uses.
Thank you.
Coyote Logistics fell under the 10% rule, and at that time, it was under the 10%.
This was just for some history. This was a, something that was put in place when some of us were on the Plan Commission, and this was the period about seven or eight years ago, when all the banks decided that they wanted to radically expand their personal banking businesses. And so the city was, I mean, they came into the city and all over the country with large amounts of money to spend to get physical presence, and they really were driving out retail uses. They could pay more rent. They would fix up the space on their own. They would build special-purpose buildings, and they really, it was really, and we knew this wasn't gonna last forever, and so we tried to do a couple of things with zoning and with special use permits to limit the long-term damage, and to make sure that we didn't eat into the core of the retail of the city. So one thing that occurs to me, though, is I don't think we put in anything about a regular old office use going in, other than the 10% rule. There's no special use permit required for a straight-up office use going in some of those sites, is there?
There isn't. Again, if it's outside the boundary...
So they were, they found a little crease.
If they're outside the boundary of the 10%. The 280 Deer Path is within the boundary. We're still under 10% with some changes that have occurred. The 600 Western Avenue is not in the 10% rule. And again, just for history, we tried to keep that 10% boundary very tight to Market Square to really create a density of retail.
Yeah, I mean, I wish Coyote Logistics was still here, frankly. They brought all kinds of employees to town, and they were shopping and dining and doing all kinds of other things. It was wonderful. Anyway, I'll make a motion to waive first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, Koenig and Stray was in there previously without any special parking requirements, because they predated. So are you requiring At Properties to have the same conditions as prudential preferred in Koenig and Stray?
Yes. The ordinance for At Properties, I think, starts on page 37 of your packet, and the conditions are virtually identical.
I can see where it's more of a practical hardship for those guys, because it's a lot further away. And the truth of the matter is that east side of Western Avenue, there facilitated parking for Koenig and Stray, it's still left a lot of...
We have Caribou Coffee coming in just down the street from them, so it's still important to keep those on-street spaces for customers. So yes, the condition is the same for all of them.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment there. I thought it was rather nice that they dressed up the windows the way they did with the community photos, and drove by that again today, and it just looked really nice, and I think, I think more people should do that, so.
Thank you.
Sorry, is that what you were gonna say?
That's what I was gonna say, too.
You may wish to direct staff to use them as an example as we enforce the vacant storefront ordinance that you adopted not too long ago. So direct is...
So direct.
Consider yourself correct.
So we have, we have two items here. We have, looking for a motion to waive the first reading?
Move to waive first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That motion passes. The second one is, if so desired, the grand final approval.
And move to grand final approval.
Second.
This roll-call vote, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Panelyan.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seventy-eight, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you, Birdie. Our next item is new business. This is an authorization to award drainage improvement work for Town Line Community Park, presented by Chuck Myers, our superintendent of Parks and Forestry. We did have a discussion of this earlier at our finance committee meeting, but Chuck, if you wanna come on up, and if there's any other questions, we'll entertain those. If not, we can move to a recommended action. Any questions for Chuck? No? I know we did vet this earlier, so if not, we'd entertain a motion for, the staff recommends the expending of the debt service fund from Route 60, the debt issue to address drainage concerns at Town Line Community Park, in the amount of $82,362, including $60,396 award of a sole vendor contract to conserve FS for the work on the drainage issues at Town Line Park.
And I'll move to approve the, well, the expending of the debt service, and I need my reading glasses, funds from the Route 60 debt issue to address the drainage concerns at Town Line Community Park, in the amount of $82,362, including $60,396 award of sole vendor contract to conserve SF, FS.
Do you have a second?
Second.
So a roll-call vote, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Panelyan.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seventy-eight, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you, Birdie. Our next item on the agenda this evening is historical and legislative update on health insurance plan and healthcare reform, presented by DeShay Kalmer, our human resource director, and Peter Wright, who is our third-party consultant on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'll try and move through this quickly, because I know you've been here a little longer than anticipated this evening. We thought, since there are so many new members of the council, that we would sort of give you a very brief history on our health insurance, where we've been, and what we're doing. And then also, Peter Wright, who is our benefits consultant with Wright Benefit Strategy, is here to give you an update on healthcare reform, what we've done so far, and what's to come, and the impact on our plan, and how we're doing right now financially in our plan, and where it might take us with the new reform. First of all, history. We've been self-insured since 1981, I'm sorry, 1981. We were with an insurance cooperative. We were charter members of the cooperative, and were probably one of the first groups to do such a thing. That disbanded in June of 99, at which point, we became completely self-insured. At that point in time, we had no reserves. At that point in time, we had no reserves on file. In two thousand and three, we began working with Peter Wright, he sort of was peripherally helping us, and he immediately made some recommendations for changes that saved us about three hundred thousand dollars in the first year. In two thousand and four, we actually hired Wright Benefit Strategies as our benefits consulting firm, and we also, at the same time, created an employee benefit committee. Peter worked with that committee to look at changing our medical plans. They ultimately, we, it took some patience on the part of the council to put up with this. It took about nine months of educating the committee, but I think ultimately, it has led us down the path of being in a very good place financially with our health insurance. They came up with a traditional PPO plan, and then also, what we call our employee choice plan, it's a high deductible plan with a health reimbursement account attached to it. We were one of the first municipalities in the area to offer this. We weren't the first as far as offering a self-directed or consumer-directed plan, however, I do think we were about the first to offer one that was completely self-insured. We did such a good education job that we had fifty-two percent of our eligible workforce switch to this plan in the first year, and that number remains pretty consistent and has the entire time. The approach, I think, that we take is a testament to the City Council. Again, as I mentioned earlier, the fact that you enabled us to work with the employee benefit committee to restructure the plan options with Peter, working with Peter, has enabled us to educate our workforce, and we have spent a lot of time doing that. The benefit committee members have gone out, they've talked to their workgroups, Peter and I have held a lot of meetings with the workgroups, educating them, and that really has contributed, because they are informed consumers. We also have a strategy of having premium increases, even if they're very modest premium increases. That's enabled us to go from no reserves in nineteen ninety-nine, to having enough reserves to cover the unfunded retiree liability, or what's called OPEB, that is required for us. Peter's gonna talk to you more about what our reserves are. Also, having this reserve position allows us, along with the PCA Committee, to evaluate stop-loss options, and evaluate the cost and benefit balance. Two years ago, I think it was, we actually upped our stop-loss amount to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, because we had enough in reserves to absorb any potential claims in the extra that we would have to pay for that, but it also enabled us to have a substantial savings in our stop-loss premiums. I'd like to introduce Peter now, he's going to talk about healthcare reform and give you a little more information about where our plans stand.
Thanks, DeChey, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Again, I'm Peter Wright, I've been fortunate to have worked with the city since approximately two thousand and three, two thousand and four. We're gonna talk about health reform highlights, but I want to point out something that DeChey pointed out that is a key point to what I'll be making as a, a point to this committee. The use of the employee benefit committee and the, the environment that you've created, that the city has created, I think, has had a material impact on people's use of the plan, more importantly, people's maintenance of their own health. DeChey mentioned, it took us probably nine months to, to work through the committee, redesign the benefit plans, and what's come from that is a continuing trend for a modest-sized, self-funded population to have lower cost growth than most municipalities, if not all, in the Chicago area. We are in the North Shore, it's one of the most expensive areas for healthcare, next to the city as well, but I, it's very important to recognize that that employee morale has a large impact, I think, on healthcare costs. I've been doing this for almost thirty years now, and I can tell you neighbors, the city neighbors, where I've heard comments coming from staff saying, "We know we have a stressful environment," all right? It's not to say that city business is not stressful, but I think DeChey, Bob, and the council, you've done a great job of creating, you know, your recognition tonight is a good example of that, creating an environment that's positive. So, switching gears now, what I want to give you is a very brief highlight on healthcare reform, and then talk about cost growth, I know it's late. Health reform, as many of us have heard in the paper, is really dealing with three main issues, so if we boil it down to the very simplest, the, the first point is health design requirements, in other words, what does a health plan have to cover? That will come in sort of twofold, one on insurance plans, the second being self-funded plans like the city. We're also gonna have a coverage requirement for employers over age, over fifty employees. Basically, that means we're gonna have to offer insurance. That base of people we'll probably have to offer insurance to will expand through the health reform legislation. And then the third piece is health insurance exchanges, and importantly, low-income subsidies for low-income people, as well as guaranteed issue for all employees as of, employees and citizens as of two thousand and fourteen. This is a very important point in the realm of insurance design and insurance funding. It will impact our OPEB liability, hopefully very positively, and it's something that I think the current press, the media, the political environment is not focusing on. These three pieces are really what healthcare reform is all about. Within that health reform, there's a coverage mandate. Basically, there's an individual mandate, as we all, we all know, that in all persons will have to have insurance coverage. Now, there's also an employer mandate, but, but our current political media doesn't call it an employer mandate, but it effectively, it effectively is. That mandate is, you can offer, you have to offer insurance that meets these requirements in the key issues category, health plan design requirements, and that coverage has to be affordable, and that affordability means a certain percentage of income. Generally, I've cited here at nine-point-five percent of income. Anyone that works in the lower salary tier for, lower salary tiers for the City of Lake Forest would be subject to this sort of cap. Right now, you would meet that cap, it's not something to worry about, but should our contributions grow very much, it is possible that we could run into that cap. Another portion of that coverage mandate is, in effect, part-time employees, in other words, someone that we've traditionally thought as employers not to have to cover, we're now gonna have to include them in this test for a coverage mandate. What that means is, by design, we have to extend an offer of coverage to people that we wouldn't normally cover, or we can pay a penalty. There is a no-coverage penalty within the law, if I offer no coverage whatsoever, I pay one penalty, however, if I offer coverage but it's not affordable, I have a higher penalty, but it's a per-person thing. So, for example, in the city, we've done some rough calculations for the part-time staff, if the, if we had to cover so many part-time people, if we had to pay a penalty or cover them, we'd probably be talking about eighty thousand dollars in penalties today. That's a very rough estimate, but to give you a gauge of what this law does mean. Other pieces of healthcare reform are benefit design and covered services, you have heard about some of this in the news. For example, we have no pre-existing conditions for children, eventually that will go away for everyone by two thousand and fourteen. Those of us with children who are over age twenty-three, when they typically are kicked off health insurance plans, they now are eligible, and DeChey has to keep these younger dependents on the plan, and politically, we hear comments that, "Oh, this isn't expensive," but believe me, when you look at actuarial numbers, you look at tables of rates, you know, my son, when he reaches that age, is a risk and could be expensive, all right? It's not to say all kids are, that's not the case, but definitely there's a cost increase. Some other ones are, an increase in our lifetime maximums, we can't have unlimited plans, we will have to cover what's termed essential benefits, even though we don't know what these are just right now, for insured plans, and a plan like ours doesn't have to necessarily meet this covered essential benefits, but it is gonna have to meet an actuarial test that will be a backdoor way to test this covered services. So, we've really got key issues of what the law's all about, we've got a coverage mandate coming up in two thousand and fourteen, and we have benefit designs that have to meet federal requirements now, all right? But if you're a grandfathered plan, which the city has decided to be, you don't have to add all of these new requirements in right away. There's a reason plans will do that. First off, we don't have to offer some of these higher-cost benefits, such as free help, wellness screenings, just yet, until we decide to do that. It's not to say a no-co-pay wellness exam is not a good idea, it just isn't really free. And the second point is, if you don't have, if you don't come onto these new regulations right away, you have a, a more plan-friendly appeals process, at least for the time being. What that means is, if someone gets a claim denied, it's a little bit easier for a plan to use the existing regulations than the new regulations. But finally, keep in mind that this grandfathered status is a temporary thing, all right? So, it's really meant to give us some time while we evaluate healthcare reform, particularly also deal with some issues we, we face as we manage the plans, having to do with collective bargaining situations. Going to the next page, and I forgot to ask DeChey to move it forward. Another aspect of healthcare reform, which is good news for the city relative to retiree coverage, is the early retiree reinsurance program. This is a reinsurance pool for any early retiree. What it does is, it reimburses eighty percent of claims within a given range, for example, fifteen thousand to ninety thousand dollars for two thousand and ten. In two thousand and ten, and we are participating in this, this program, we assisted the city in applying for this program, I actually serve as a manager for the program, which simply means that I manage the information that goes to and from the website. The website is run by the federal government. There's no expected reimbursement for two thousand and ten, because our early retirees were not expensive, we didn't have any individual claim over fifteen thousand dollars, all right? So, that's, that's good news. Interestingly enough, the program is closed to new employers, it closed approximately in May. It was basically designed to be open to anyone, but we encouraged our clients to apply early, and sure enough, by May, employers were not accepted into the program. For two thousand and eleven, I do think that we will see some reimbursement, I think we'll see probably at least forty thousand dollars, and we most likely will see more. So, within this healthcare reform legislation, the city will directly benefit from this, potentially for well over forty thousand dollars in two thousand and eleven, all right? Some other aspects of healthcare reform, a healthcare reform, high-cost health plan tax, starting in two thousand and eighteen. What this is, is any plan with cost above a certain threshold will have to pay a tax. Basically, if your plan has high-risk occupations in it, you're subject to a higher maximum, we would be subject to this higher limit for taxes. Basically, the tax is forty percent of the cost exceeding an applicable limit. This tax would be paid by the plan, however, as I'll comment a little later in a meeting in Washington, in a focus group session with the Department of Labor, and this is with other professionals, mostly attorneys and benefits people, the thinking is that this tax is probably gonna be lower than forty percent. It was thrown in there during the course of creating this law to help be a revenue item for scoring at the Office of Management and Budget, or the Congressional Budget Office, excuse me. Today, our Lake Forest single cost is roughly sixty-seven hundred dollars for our cheaper plan, over annually for a single, or eighty-nine hundred for the more expensive plan over the annual course. In two thousand and eleven, Lake Forest's family costs were seventeen thousand eight for the cheaper plan, and roughly twenty-four thou, twenty-three thousand for the higher-cost plan. Now, doing the numbers, this suggests that our cost growth can't exceed roughly three-point-five to five-point-five percent annually. Why five-point-five percent? Because within the text of the law is a trigger for this high-cost health plan tax, it will be indexed up if the federal government, a certain plan from the federal government goes up more than five-point-five percent. Now, suffice it to say, I would not expect a City of Lake Forest or someone else to keep their plan design static. Also, as I mentioned, two thousand and fourteen, we are going to have health insurance exchanges open up. I, I spoke with, with both retirees that you commended leaving, I had individual meetings with those retirees this year to talk about their health insurance options, and my comment isn't specific to those individuals, but it's a common theme that was expressed by all of the retirees, is they do want other options. One thing about the state of Illinois law is, you have to offer the same health insurance plan as you do to actives, to retirees, you can offer options, but you basically have to make the same plan available at the same rate for everyone. Well, if I was retiring, I might want to find the highest deductible plan I possibly can, and so on. So, I think that you would probably see retirees tend to not necessarily stay on your plan. Some little highlights on the cost management initiatives over the last year relative to health reform. Basically, most employers have decided to take, up until starting recently, a wait-and-see approach, and that really has to do with the regulations that are coming out of Washington, and how big this law is. But in two thousand and ten, as most well-run plans will do, we had a communication to staff, we had a communication with the benefit committee. In addition, DeChey and I and Bob have had several meetings talking about, what do we wanna do with the plans? We should start thinking about plan redesign, how do we manage the cost to get the cost to go down? And frankly, DeChey has come back and said, and we've talked extensively on this, we, we are a collectively bargained plan for roughly sixty percent of our population, if not a little bit more. That creates limitations in the ability to make changes, and strategically, I, I concur with the city's decision, based on health reform, certain internal workings of the cities, currently, the decision was to try to keep the plans the way they are, that's why we kept the grandfathered status. It can keep, you know, if, it's certain strategies relative to labor negotiations, it can keep things at a little bit more subdued level. And I will note, in conversations with other clients, I have noted a higher level of bargaining involvement from some of the groups, from the union groups, if you will, that are more geared towards getting something, not necessarily really coming to the table, but, for example, if you look at the paper and see how some of the unions have responded to various actions, you know, there's definitely a higher tone there. But suffice it to say, the city chose to stay grandfathered for the time being, that will be revisited continually. Ongoing cost management initiatives, in two thousand and nine, we brought to the city's attention a couple of health strategies, including them looking at more aggressive PPO networks than what we have right now. We did identify that there was probably three hundred thousand dollars of savings, but at the time, it would require a significantly smaller network, and DeChey and Bob's thinking was, and my thinking as well, is that would be very disruptive to the employees, and it wasn't clear that we would get everybody to go into those cheaper hospitals. Now, in two thousand and ten, we're, we started discussions with other networks, and we're actually doing a full-blown RFP this year to look for not only PPOs, but others. And the data from two thousand and ten suggested that we could save probably three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred thousand dollars, or almost eight to ten percent of plan cost, and those networks have now expanded a lot, so, we're probably gonna be coming back to council at some point, and asking for a change, to recommend that change. We've also managed stop-loss pretty aggressively over the years. Mayor Rumel was very involved in this process as an alderman, as well as, as mayor. As you know, he does have a very strong insurance background, and I think that, you know, is a very good experience, not only for the, for myself and the city, but working with the PCA Committee in working on stop-loss. Basically, our strategy is, is we will come back, through Bob and DeChey, to you during the renewal process, which starts right now, we've got the RFP out, actually, and we typically will meet with the PCA Committee to talk about, where are all the bids coming in? We generally are marketing it every year. We market to probably fifteen to twenty different stop-loss providers, it's actually a fairly small network. What I mean by that, there's probably six direct writers, they're actually the insurance company paper, there's probably another five or six brokers, brokers, if you will. Those tend to be better deals, or worse deals for the client, although the financials can be better. So, the point is, we do explore all the different markets, we tend to try to buy quality as opposed to, you know, the cheapest deal on the street, and then have a claim excluded. We are doing, as I mentioned, a full-service RFP this year for claim services, stop-loss, and PPO networks. As I mentioned before, we've had preliminary design, design discussions, particularly with regard to this preventative care requirement in, in the new reform legislation, and whether we should remain grandfathered or non-grandfathered, all right? I want to get into just a couple charts about cost growth and cost trends over time, but I want to give you some basic background. This is really statistical backgrounds for, for actuaries or underwriters, but there's some key concepts to think about, because frankly, healthcare has gone up a whole, a whole lot faster than, you know, when we buy food, even though people talk about food inflation right now. Medical care generally has always been about two, two times the rate of CPI, that's just for the services alone. But there's basically cost inflation in our services, or the medical component, but we also have utilization. Historically, people have learned about a new technology, that's called utilization, that's worth one to two percent in our health cost trend. And then aging, we're all getting older, I have more gray hair, that's worth two to three percent, particularly on a group that's got retirees, it can be worth more. And then, finally, this really translates to, these are the, the inflation factors that impact our plans, but we also have to deal with, really, just the, the pure cost inflation of all the various services that we have, not just the doctors and hospitals, but all the little component parts. The actual Lake Forest health plan cost growth has actually been very favorable, it's been roughly six-point-three percent over the last five years. It's been roughly 6.3% over the last five years. That's well below this region particularly, but as well, it's well below the industry trend and the average rate of growth for health plans around the country. When you look at statistics and you see a published report about the average rate of growth for a health plan, let's say it's a Kaiser study, or let's say it's a, you hear it, it's a Tribune article, just to name something. It's usually after plan design changes, if not always after plan design changes, and it might be net of contribution changes. So it's difficult to make an apple-to-apples comparison. In fact, you should take the survey data and add 2% to 3% for plan design changes to get the cost growth in the survey data. Some contributing factors to cost growth. Fixed costs tend to go up faster than medical inflation, particularly for stop-loss because of what's called deductible leveraging. If I keep the same deductible today, a year from now with 12% medical inflation or 10%, that stop-loss claim grows a lot faster than that. That's why fixed cost tends to go up, which is why you tend to want to take higher deductibles over time. We also have a contributing factor in our large claims risk, our population risk. An example of this is enrollment in municipal plans tends to go up when the economy goes south because the private sector sheds jobs faster. So I see family enrollment go up in all my municipal plans around this phase in the economic cycle. And then finally, we've got large claim risk, just, large claims show up. One year they will have large claims, another year we may not. And then another factor is regulation. Over time, regulation, state or federal, has been an average of maybe 1% per year of mandates. I know we've talked, I know you've talked about unfunded mandates, but the health reform law is, to some extent, an unfunded mandate. I think that generally, health reform, on average, a rough number is roughly 2% per year over the next several years. So last year, a little bit this year, the year after and the year after, roughly 2% will be added to the cost growth. All right? We can go to the next one. So to give you a chart, this is a chart taking the actual Lake Forest cost growth from year to year through 2010, and then projecting it out and the average rate of growth over time into the future, over five years. And I've created this chart to compare it to a compiled average of trend surveys from the leading trend providers, Kaiser, Siegel Company, a number of other ones. These are surveys where they actually go out to the health plan underwriters and say, what rate of growth are you building into your block of business this year? And for this year, we're still showing roughly around 10% nationally. In Illinois, particularly in Chicago, Blue Cross is starting to drop their trend, but the city has historically been well below that. And here you can see our projection going out. I've suggested to Kathy, over time, to use 8% for the long-range planning. In this case, I've actually used your actual five-year cost growth rate and then added in the components of health reform as they come in. That's why you see it jump up to 8.5% in 2013. In 2014, it jumps to 8.6%. On a plan of your size, this is a general projection, but again, as you can see, in historical times, you know, our cost growth will go up and down because, again, we are self-funded. There'll be times when we'll get a lot of claims at the end of the year, and then maybe we won't have so much in the next year. Okay? This funding level, which DeChey had talked about premiums, has led to a very, we're actually, I just talked about health trends, we're doing very well, but more importantly, the fact that we've kept up with our premium increases, we've been able to develop a significant reserve. And so this chart shows us our current reserves were to roughly $4 million as of 2008. Our total cost of our plan was roughly $4 million. So we have, in essence, 100% reserved position. This is extremely good, and it does make a difference, for example, when the actuaries do our other post-employment benefit obligation projections. I actually spoke at length with the actuary about the best way to set up a fund, a reserve fund, for this liability so that the actuary can use a lower interest rate in his projections. In fact, he said, Peter, as long as it is a separately identifiable fund on the financial statements, we'll use the lower interest rate, which is allowed by the GASB accounting standards. Now, we projected this out over 2011, 2012, still showing a little bit of an increase. This is, again, based on our relative premium levels and assuming we continue to inch those up, and our cost growth being roughly about what I projected to be. Now, it's likely that we could do better, it's likely we could do worse, because, again, we are self-funded and we don't know exactly what the year will have for us as the year unfolds. All right? So we're in good shape financially, but that doesn't mean that, from my perspective, you don't have to try everything. That's one of the reasons DeChey and Bob, at times, have said, Peter, now's not the time, the environment is not right for that particular thing. But we believe that it's very important that you evaluate things, become educated on what they will do, how they will work, before you put them into place, and I think that's been very beneficial with the Employee Benefits Committee. So very quickly, to finish the shifting sands of uncertainty in the talk about healthcare reform, what's happening in healthcare reform? Well, to suffice, to succinctly put it, frankly, it's a very uncertain environment, although I think more uncertainty exists at the political level than what exists in the regulatory level in Washington. I was in Washington for a conference this May with Phyllis Borsey. The Assistant Secretary of Labor was there, addressing benefit professionals from the International Foundation Employee Benefit Plans, which we're a member of. And I was at the same meeting a year ago, and we get to actually sit down and have technical discussions with the Department of Labor staff. I call them if I have questions. I mean, it's a regular working relationship with them. What they said was, basically, the idea is that we want to get the regulations written. It's taking the government some time to write these regulations and do them properly. They send them out to us as business owners or interested parties and ask for comments. Then they bring those comments back in, and they actually put them into the regulations. The net result is the regulations come out to be a little bit more user-friendly than what you might anticipate. But for 2010 and 2011, we started with implementing pre-existing conditions limitations. The lifetime maximum phase-out was brought into play. We expanded dependent eligibility, and then we started the process of establishing health insurance exchanges. And then we also started a process of rate review for insurance plans, not self-funded plans. Those last two bullets are extremely cumbersome, very behind the scenes, but we're already seeing positive results out of the rate review process in that we're starting to see this, a temperament of some of the health insurance rate increases. For 2011, basically, Phyllis Borsey said, give us some time, be patient with us. We have two main issues on our docket right now. First, retirement, security, and fiduciary requirements, fee disclosure, and then second, all of the innumerable regs coming out of health reform. And she said that her focus will be implementation and guidance to plan sponsors, not penalties. So the idea is to get people used to the health reform and learn how it works before they're necessarily going to be coming down with a very strong hammer. Now, that's what the government is saying from Washington, but as we read the papers, we can see, and Sir Mr. Filippini is very aware of this, the court challenges to the individual mandate have had mixed results. We have three courts that were expected to support the individual mandate, who did. Two courts have shot down the individual mandate, and this includes some of the appeals decisions. So the score really is three to two. That's at the appeals level. Now, this is going to be going to the Supreme Court. They will likely take it up in 2012. What we don't know is whether they're going to take it up before or after the election. My guess is they would try to do it after the election, potentially, if it's potentially shooting down the law. But I don't know that, and that's not necessarily something to bank on. But I will say that, including myself, most experts expect the law to change, and here are a number of factors that would play into that. We've got the Deficit Reduction Committee, as well as the election coming up. We also have state examples of operating health insurance reform, Massachusetts, Maine, and Utah, to name a few. In the case of Maine, they had to get rid of their rate review process because all their insurance carriers left the state bar one for individual insurance. And in Utah, an example of their, one of their programs set up for the needy and the poor, they opened up a program probably eight months ago. They expected 75,000 people to enroll. This was for Medicaid-type people that were just above the Medicaid level, those with pre-existing conditions. They have a total of 4,000 people signed up. All right? So in other words, there was a lot of effort put into this, and people think that, gee, if I just get a little subsidy, are people going to come running into these health insurance exchanges or health insurance products? Not necessarily. So even after 2014, when these health insurance exchanges come into play, this will not be the last that we hear about health insurance exchanges and whether we have an uninsured population. All right? So now, we thought we would break for questions, and I know it's late, so.
Any questions for Peter or DeChey? Is there going to be a quiz?
Yeah.
It's all there.
Excellent update. Thank you very much.
Good. Well, thank you. Any questions, don't hesitate to forward them along. All right?
I think we're kind of at that point in the evening where we're running out of steam.
I don't blame you. Especially to have health reform at this hour. Oh, my God.
Yeah. Thank you, Peter. Very well done. Thank you, DeChey.
All right. Thank you.
I appreciate, we appreciate the update. We appreciate all the efforts you've made, and you're certainly doing a great job keeping our costs in line and managing our program, so we thank you for all your help. Our next item on the agenda is a consideration of award of a contract for a proposal to conduct a community-wide survey by Chaddick Institute for Metropolitan Development and Fund Counseling, presented by Susan Banks, our communications manager. Susan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. About every three to five years, the city conducts a resident survey to gain insight on a wide range of issues and services it provides. We strongly encourage all residents to complete the survey either by mail or online, as it gives direction to the city council, boards, and commissions and staff. A draft of survey questions was circulated for your consideration on September 7th, and if you have any additions or suggestions, please let me know by September 30th. The surveys will be mailed in late October. Responses are requested back by November 18th with complete anonymity, whether completed by mail or online. The consultant will make a presentation to the city council at a January or February meeting, with the results then posted on the website. Staff requests approval of a proposal submitted by the Chaddick Institute to conduct and tally the survey and make a formal report to the city. Chaddick worked with the city in conducting the past three resident surveys in 1999, 2003, and 2006, and the cost in 2006 was about $21,000. The city has experienced a good and successful relationship with the Chaddick Institute, and the company's background, provided in your packet, is extensive and experienced in fundraising and metropolitan development. The city budgeted $25,000 for the survey this year, and the Chaddick proposal has come in at $23,731, including refining survey questions, designing and printing the survey, implementing the online component, performing data entry, running quality control checks, analyzing the data, and presenting a complete report. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Susan?
Just very quickly, real quickly, I promise. As far as the survey response, has the city in the past been satisfied with the replies that we've gotten, the response percentage?
We have been satisfied. In 1999, the return rate was 23%. In 2006, it was 18%, and Chaddick tells me that those are both, they both well exceed the standard average of only 10%.
Okay.
So, results have been pretty good.
Thanks.
I have a question about the sort of relative balance between the online responses and the printed paper tally ballot kind of responses, because the, my understanding is it's dramatically less expensive to do this on an online basis than it is to print and send, and I mean, just to post it alone for however many households we have is going to be, what, $4,000 or $5,000, something like that?
Right.
Of the cost. So is there some, have you, what has the experience been? What's your thinking about that?
My thinking is that, you know, we typically have used online surveys for different, less formal surveys that we've conducted over the website. And our thought is that because of the population of Lake Forest and many people who are older who do not wish to conduct or take a survey online, we would prefer to offer both options. Once we get into discussions with Chaddick, we'll find out more about what their experience is, but this proposal does include both options at this point. If we choose not to do a mailing option, which I don't think we will, yes, we would substantially save money.
But it would be nice if you could target the population a little bit so that you sent out, say, half the surveys to the people that didn't want to use it. I mean, I know that's a lot to ask, and it's just, it is interesting to...
We could, we could work with the seniors center to see if we can maybe try to do that.
I don't know if we, how much we know about our population and whether we have email addresses from everybody, what have you. It's just...
It's a wonderful thing in a perfect world, George.
Yeah, no, it's, and it's just such a big difference in cost that, you know, I'm just sort of curious as to how you're approaching it.
Through the school system, we could certainly have a group that has email.
It's just, it's just a thought. I just, you know, I would think you could probably cut the cost in half or something if we could do it all online, but clearly, that's not the right answer if you want to get a decent response rate, so.
Would it be possible to include the surveys with the Dialogue Magazine that's sent out, or?
We could. The survey typically has been about six to eight pages, so we'd have an awfully big dialogue. I don't know if we'd have a real big savings on that or not, but we could look into that as well.
I'm not really suggesting that you change the format dramatically from where it is today. I'm just sort of bringing this up for thinking and maybe, as the future evolves, it's, I would think you could go more and more toward the more cost-effective.
Right. At this point, I think we're just trying to saturate as many people using both methods. That may not be the case the next time we do the survey.
And it's one per household?
Yes.
So there are, what, 6,500 or 6,700?
6,700 and something like that.
67, 63 households in Lake Forest, yeah.
The problem is you want a representative sample. Everybody's going to do that, so that's been our age-old problem, is how do we communicate and how to get information back and forth? And the fact is that not everybody uses email, not everybody uses their cellphone, not, you know, so you have to try to use all the media.
Not everybody opens their physical mail anymore.
Their mail, so.
We might have a post office pretty soon, so.
I mean, we can, we can hope for those things, but that's just not the reality, so that's why, in order to get representative samples, we have to do those things.
Question.
Yes?
We did it '99, four years later, 2003, three years later, 2006. Now, we're doing it five years later. I know it's budgeted for $25,000. How bad would you feel if we put it off a year? We've had a lot of extraordinary expenses due to the freak storms this summer. Is it something we have to have, or could we put it off a year and save the $23,000?
That is certainly your decision to make. I do know, however, that the council plans on conducting a strategic planning session in the winter, and I think kind of the idea was to have some feedback from residents at this point, and I'm well aware that residents are wanting to give us feedback and communicate with us, and I think we need this data in order to conduct our strategic planning session.
Do they need a survey, actually, to communicate with us? Don't the people who want to tell us something feel free to tell us exactly what's on their mind?
Well, getting it all in one place is another situation. Yes, I think they do communicate with us, but in order to saturate the residents with all the questions that we would like to have answered, we need to have a central and an outside party conduct that sort of survey.
And the only thought is, now that the budget is a little more challenged, we might need the input to determine what programs that we want to address or not address, so the heightened sensitivity now might be more of a need for a survey.
I think the key point was that we haven't done a planning session in the same period of time, probably that five years, so we're, as Bob and I have discussed, we're kind of at that point where, you know, we got to kind of catch up again here now, and the time is right to do that, and without adequate information, are you making the right decision? So it's kind of a chicken and the egg problem here.
This is 1,000 recipients? Approximately 1,000 people reply?
20%, right? So more like 1500.
18% in 2006.
13, 14, 1,400. I mean, historically, so.
I guess I would look at it a little differently. It's been five years, and yeah, we've had some extraordinary expenditures and things in the last year or two, but one of the interesting things to me is that the population of the city and the demographic makeup of the city has changed dramatically in those five years. Smaller school populations, people with families aren't moving in the way they did prior to the, to the financial train wreck, and we've got different, a different balance of needs, I would think, than we had five years ago, and we need to probably understand that. So I would, I would, I would tend to support this. I'm just sort of poking around, seeing if there's ways we could do it cheaper, so.
Any other questions for Susan? If not, entertain a motion.
We'll make a motion to approve the survey.
Second?
Roll call vote, please.
Oliver Novit.
Hi.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Panalean?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Morse?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyer?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
78's known as motion carries.
Thank you, Birdie. Our next, and thank you, Susan. Our next item on the agenda is any additional items for council discussion?
I have one, I'm sorry. I know it's late, but we missed, saw the council comments earlier. I was at a youth summit as youth services person around the council. It was 90 students that got together and that talked about, volunteered and spent all day together moderated by a professional from Columbus, Ohio. It was a fabulous event. It was held over at the hospital. They discussed the, what it was like living in Lake Forest. And 14 of them stuck around and presented to a roomful of adults. And I was there, Perry Griffith was there, Senator Garrett was there. There were a bunch of other people that were, that were there to listen. And there was a lot to be discussed. I think that the stress of living in today's society, the lack of playtime, all these things, but what I, one of the things that I really pulled out of it was, that I thought would be important to share, was the substance abuse questions that came up. These were the dominating questions from the parents for these representative students. And the moderator, and of course, he wanted to cover their topics and parents wanted to go right back to the substance questions. But he stated a very interesting statistic that when, when the parents of the kids up there were children and they went to drink or do drugs or whatever the case was, there was a social event around it. And they would, they would get together and they would drink for hours. And it was a social event. And today's kids, because of the stress of performance, about a third of the substance abuse has to do with attention drugs taken without the parent's knowledge, not the ones that they're known, so to get better test scores. Steroids to get bigger muscles and, and stay awake drugs to be able to handle practice after school. And it was, it was shockingly hurtful, actually, to hear that our kids, you know, a third of the kids doing any kind of substance abuse. The other was stress relief. They go back and they binge drink and just to let go of the day. And they're 12 years old and 15 years old and things like that. And I hadn't heard that perspective on children growing up, and I thought it was important to share because it was, it was shocking to me, even though for children, so.
Yeah. Are they going to, you know, publish any of this? Are we going to be able to get a copy of?
It was filmed. There was a projector there. It was done at the hospital. It was, it was really good. I can, if you'd like, I can try to get a, see who...
If someone would memorialize it, I think it'd be great information for, you know, for the city to see.
Yeah. I mean, I thought I knew a lot about kids until I listened to this, but it was, it was pretty shocking. I didn't realize...
Could they put that on the YouTube collection that we have on the website?
I'm sure it's going to be published and I'm someone, you know, who was very involved in setting it up, if they're watching tonight, which I doubt, would probably be, you know, trying to get the message across, but I'll, I'll try to get that information for the next council meeting. But it was remarkably awakening kind of information. That's, I'll ahead.
Good. Thank you. Any other?
Mr. Mayor, can I just remind those watching that there is a joint public meeting this Wednesday night here in the council chambers. The Park and Recreation Board and the Historic Preservation Commission will hear an information presentation from the Forest Park Project Board. No action will be taken, but it's an opportunity to hear what's been going on over the last year and really is a next step in moving that project forward. So, 6:30 here, Wednesday night.
Okay. Very good. Any other items for discussion?
Maybe adjournment.
If not, entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll so move.
Second?
Call our favor.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.